Let me call to order the Williamsport City Council Budget Work Session Number One Meeting. It is Monday, December 5th. Please rise for invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, before I say a brief prayer, before we dig into the budget, we want to take a moment to note the passing of Marlene Whaley, our former colleague, friend to many, acquaintance of many, many more. We just note the accomplishments she made, the first African American to serve on city council, rising to the office of president, and all those things that we've discussed before. One thing I'm grateful for was we were able to honor her while she was still with us and express our appreciation and love for her and her family and all those that she was able to touch. And tonight, I just remember her as someone who wasn't ever a wallflower or a crass politician, but someone who was a voice, who wasn't afraid to speak with courage and conviction, representing many who didn't have a voice. Tonight, we honor all those things, and we ask, Lord, your blessing on her family, to comfort them and to keep them at this time as they've gone through the loss of their mother and their father in such a short space of time. Let's take a moment of silence and honor Marlene Whaley. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with the business of the city, the deliberations on the budget, the dollars and cents, the people and services and citizens that this affects in so many ways. And as always, we ask for wisdom, Lord, as we balance against each other the things we can do and the things that we must do against the resources that are available and the ability of our citizens to supply those funds and revenues. Give us wisdom, guide us, Lord, and lead us through this deliberation, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allison, for that. I appreciate your words about Mrs. Whaley. And as I was sitting down, I was reminded of this card that has been passed along from one president to the council. It originally was signed, a gift, I think, must have been flowers from Jerry Fosnot, dated February 14th, 2010. Happy Valentine's Day to Marlene. And I guess I haven't really thought about the front of this, but I think it's appropriate to note an additional what you said, good advice maybe from Jerry to Marlene and now Marlene's legacy to us. It's a couple of puppies and a teacup, that's real cute, but it says, "We're all in this together," and then it quotes from Romans, "Be devoted to one another, honor one another, live in harmony with one another." Thank you, Marlene. So as we do every year, it is time for us to review the administration's proposed budget, and we do that in two parts. Tonight, we'll be dealing with utility fund, income estimates, general government, Department of Streets and Parks, and miscellaneous other fund budgets. We then Wednesday night will cover the remainder of the budget proposal. I believe, unless my colleagues would prefer to do it otherwise, our tradition has been to review the proposals, ask questions of the administration, the mayor and his department heads in each of the reviews, and hold any suggested amendments that we usually would have, will often have, until either the first reading, which will occur this Thursday, or the second reading that will occur the following Thursday. Again, you're free to choose to deal with the budget how you'd like, but that has been our tradition in recent years. So we'll just take them in order, and I think usually what we do is if it goes is a one or one and a half page budget, we'll do it in its totality. If it happens to be a budget that has multiple pages, then we'll take it in manageable chunks for questions. So with that said, Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Yes. I would like to start out by offering to sing the fight song for Penn State, if that would be appropriate. I guess not.
Absolutely, acapella.
Huh? I can do it, trust me. No, maybe not. See how it goes tonight. But anyway, as I've had in the past, I provided, handed out some information related to RVT's 2016 service delivery highlights. Highlight of the evening is that I'm not going to go over the highlights.
Okay.
But I want to mention in your packet is our service delivery highlights, so when you have an opportunity, take a look at all the good stuff that the RVT was able to do this year, including the grand opening of Trade and Transit. There's also a flyer that we use to promote the Michael Ross Events Center, which is seeing a lot of activity, which is, which we're very happy about. And also, an information guide that when people visit Trade and Transit Center too, because there's a lot of things to see, we put a little information guide together, including the Midtown Landing Map, which shows just, you know, the different things that one can see, including the public arts, the sports walk, and other things that we have there. So we were glad to put this together and provide that to you this evening. So the utility fund or the RVT budget starts on page one, obviously, in the RVT section. And on the first page, you will see the projected revenues for 2017, starting with fares, which is the first line item, $820,000, and this is typically based on what we predict for ridership for next year, as well as our service levels that are anticipated. Advertising, which is revenue generated from the sale of bus boards, $20,000. Senior citizen fares, once again, there's nothing showing because that was, because of Act 44, that was rolled into the operating subsidy under the state line item. Bus charge, $12,000. Other income, $5,000. Expected subsidy from Federal Transit Administration, $1.6 million. Subsidy anticipated from the Commonwealth, $4,046,000. Again, both of those are based on, in many ways, performance, especially ridership, so we continue to do very well, and we're happy to see what we're anticipating for next year. Operating subsidy, local from the city and our eight municipal partners, $320,000, and other subsidy, other, which is funding from other partners such as Susquehanna Health, the colleges, the mall, et cetera, $50,000. Interest income, $2,000. Program income, $350,000. And then a transfer to debt service of $150,000, which leaves an anticipated operating budget, $7,075,000 for 2017. And then the other line items on that page are the three categories of expenses that follow in the budget administration, vehicle operations and maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions for this page? The one question is, the actual estimate for 2016 fares was a bit down from expectations. Is that a one-time blip? And, you know, do you expect them to meet targets next year?
About a year and a half ago was the last time we adjusted our fares, and just primarily to our discounted fares. People are taking advantage of them, and so because they're taking advantage of a lot of our discounted fares, you know, we haven't been able to hit the $820,000 mark. However, with our anticipated expansion plan for next year, we do anticipate that $820,000 will be reached, which I'll mention later.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
In relation to that, then, if you increase ridership, though, you mentioned that's tied into the state subsidy, so...
And the federal subsidy.
So getting a discount on the fare, but if you increase ridership, that may offset that?
Absolutely, because one of the performance standards is based on rides per capita. So, you know, we are fourth in the state, I think, in terms of rides per capita, behind Philly, Pittsburgh, State College, and I think it's, we're either fourth or fifth. And so we've always, our philosophy always to have discounted fares in many different ways. We have a day pass, you can ride unlimited rides for $2, and our 10-ride passes and our, you know, monthly pass. So, you know, we, you know, very attractive, and I think it does help ridership, which does help performance, which does help get us additional subsidies. So, you know, sort of a win-win.
All right.
The next page, page two, administration. For RVT, under personal services, administrative salaries, $275, and then the related benefit costs, life insurance, health insurance, which citywide is anticipated to be about a 6% increase. FICA pensions, physicals, unemployment compensation, so total personal services for administration, Under purchase of services, telephone, $25,000; travel, $4,500; light and power building, $90,000. That also includes our costs associated with the CNG compression, so we did see an increase here, but that is one of the anticipated or expected costs for the CNG operation. So that's $90,000 for next year. Service contracts, contracts such as the one with STEP, our security services, $95,000; hearings and litigation, $3,000; transfer to our planning budget, $450,000; subscription dues, $3,500; transfer to City Williams Board for Administrative Services, $75,000; auditing services, $36,000. And that also funds support from the city, single audit, as well as our 630 financial, the state and federal financial reports that are required as the end of each fiscal year, I think, 6th June 30th. Then on the next page, under administration, supplies and materials, general office supplies, $32,000; insurance building, $3,500; heat, $10,000. If you can remember past budgets, that was more than double that number, but with our whole maintenance facility being heated by used oil, that's reduced that cost considerably. Facility maintenance, $45,000, and contingency, $140,731. Obviously, that's much higher than normally, what is normally budgeted, but we're setting aside $100,000 for a service expansion possibility we've been working on now for approximately three years, and that's serviced to Clinton County, including, you know, Lock Haven College, the city of Lock Haven, the county of Clinton County. We've been working with the commissioners, as well as city officials, college officials, you know, the mayor's been involved in that. Again, we started talks probably, probably over two years ago, but now there's a lot of consensus of what they would like to see, at least on a trial approach for four months. We're looking at possibly doing this from February, April, February, March, April and May, and so we're hoping that finally, you know, we'll be able to put something on the road and expand our services to Clinton County in the 220 quarter. So we're really excited about that. You know, there's a lot of positive feedback from the citizens, as well as elected officials that really would like to see this happen, but there's a lot of groups that need to come together on this, and so we should be, if they're able to budget something for 2017, then you'll see us heading west. The total of administration, $2,445,731.
Comments, questions?
On, just on the health insurance, you said there's a 6% increase, that's across the board?
Yes. You'll see that in all city departments.
That's a decent number.
Very good number.
Yeah.
Once again, Benicon is the administration, the mayor, you know, looked into that early on in his first term and was able to, be able to become part of that consortium. As you know, we get a dividend every year if our experience is favorable, and our experience has been favorable, and this year was a very good year, and we're certainly optimistic that that'll continue.
And the question I had on the line item itself was, you had quite a decrease in what was budgeted. Was there a specific reason?
Where is, which line? I'm sorry.
The health insurance line. It was budgeted at 877, but the actual was only 840.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's an outcome of, you know, whether someone has a family plan or a single plan, and it takes the buyout, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that number. So if somebody leaves, the employee of RVT has a family plan, and then a new individual comes in, and it's only a single, you have those variables or variations in that number. So I think we had, it was a 9.7% increase for this year, so I think that's what we had budgeted, but I just, I think there were some personnel changes that led us to some savings.
Okay.
The only question I had is to go back to the contingency there of the Clinton County expansion. Is the idea then, for those, what is it, I think you mentioned four or five months, the trial period, there wouldn't be substantial revenue to show as a, kind of a separate offsetting line from that contingency, or that's the expected net operating loss for the trial?
Yeah, that's the expected net. As I mentioned, the fares, we show an increase of about, what was it, $30,000, $25,000. So that's where the offset is. We just built that into the fare income.
So that's...
A lot of unknowns with this, so it's sort of hard to really predict.
And of course, you've got to get people used to the service and running buses before they're riding buses, probably. And so I would imagine that your operating loss, if it were to become a permanent, wouldn't be that kind of ratio. It'd be more in line with your normal kind of subsidized numbers from the state and federal sources.
Yeah, that, you know, we would have to, we're meeting with state officials on this in a week or a couple of weeks. You know, we have the opportunity to hire part-time workers, and we want to, you know, so, you know, there's a lot of things that, we're taking a very slow approach on this, you know. We don't want to provide a lot of service and then have to cut it back, so we're going on a very limited trial type of situation, and the actual service delivery plan is, you know, very conservative, so, you know, just to make sure that we're, you know, if we need to build it, we'll build on what we're trying to do, but...
And I would imagine if it becomes a permanent thing, that we probably expect to see, like we do every year, the municipal partners, you know, added, additional municipal partners and non-municipal partners.
Right, there's, again, a lot, they, actually, the group, there was an advisory committee that was put together, and they've been working well in terms of what they feel is a fair allocation to each entity for local, a local share. We gave them a total number for local share that we were looking for, and they sort of worked it out with the hospital, the college, the county, the city of Lock Haven, some residential areas involved, you know, want to be a part of this. So it's really an exciting thing when they, you know, they're walking us with open arms and, you know, they think this is a great thing.
And the reason I bring that up is every year when you talk about our municipal subsidy, you make, point out that the city's share of that has not increased even as the service area has increased. And so, you know, that's the anticipation part, that continues to be true and would be anticipated to be true. The city taxpayers wouldn't be subsidizing Lock Haven service, and so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, as I mentioned, there was, we build, we keep adding new partners, so the original partners, you know, the local share hasn't gone up for over two decades. So this is exciting because it adds another local partner, and that again keeps the same, the local share to the city, and the other original municipalities won't see any increase. So it's sort of, again, a win-win situation.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Captain.
Hi. When you're talking about limited services, you're talking strictly in the Lock Haven area, right, from the, just for the beginning? Eventually, will you be coming, the service coming into the Williamsport area?
Yes, there would be, no, it's not, it's what they, I wanted to see, some service within Clinton County, as well as service to Williamsport. So we now have service at Jersey Shore, so the service plan that we've built is a connection there in Jersey Shore, so that people can actually, a college student could ride from the college all the way to the mall, you know, with a transfer.
There's also a lot of people who do work in the city that live in Lock Haven, so that might help, especially during bad weather and things. So I think it's a great asset.
We did, we've done surveys, we've done a lot of outreach just to see, you know, what was wanted, and there was, and a lot of people responded that they wanted to go to a place called the Choc-a-Lot, I'm not sure.
And Bill said, "Where's that?"
And the Hurdy Count. But no, it's, so it's, again, service within Clinton County and a connection to come into Lock Haven, because there's a lot of, we have work trips designed because, you know, that's a heavy traffic quarter on 220, and a lot of people coming and coming into work, so we're hoping to really take advantage of that. And also, we're serving, we're going to serve, what's the main, McElhatten, the...
First Quality.
First Quality, yes. They are, they are having trouble, people that want to work there from Williamsport, one of the biggest problems is they have no transportation. So they're part of the so-called alliance that's being built there in Clinton County, so they're excited about a possibility of getting people from the Williamsport area to their plant for, you know, for work.
That's why I asked you, because there's so many people that do go back and forth. I don't think a lot of people realize how many people do travel back and forth from that area. So I think it's great, it really is.
Any further comments before we move on?
So this would increase our, your regional footprint, then? And so I would imagine that puts you in an even stronger position, then, for, I know that the state and the feds like to see that kind of...
Yeah, with our, you know, the system that we manage to the north of us and out to the west, and there's a lot of talk about tying up with CADA from State College, the transit system goes as far as Lamar. So we're not that far away where we could connect with CADA, so you could go from Williamsport to State College via public transportation, which would be pretty neat.
Yeah, I kind of wondered, that was my second question, did you have State College in your sights, for some reason?
Well, I think that Saturdays in the fall would be...
That's when Bill's going to be riding there.
He'll be driving.
Be more like riding home. No. Ms. Meath?
Just a couple of quick questions, actually, about Lock Haven service, and to what extent, not so much operational efficiencies, but how long will it take the average rider to get from, say, Williamsport to Lock Haven on the bus versus vehicle, versus car transportation? I'm just curious to know, sort of, especially if we do eventually make a move to try to get travelers all the way from Williamsport to State College, what kind of transit times we're looking at?
Well, the work trips would be more of an express-type service, you know, because people want to get to work and not have to spend a lot of time on the bus. The midday trips are a little bit more, so the stops between here and Lock Haven are primarily First Quality in that area for work trips. The midday trips are more, you know, taking the senior citizen facilities and ridership to their particular strip mall, where I think they have a Walmart there and other commercial areas that they want to go to, but you probably are looking at, in terms of travel time, it's probably, in the midday, when we're serving a lot of different areas, probably double what it would be, what you, than you would be in your car, so to speak.
That's still fairly expedient. And one other quick question, something you said really fast, that Clinton County had found multiple organizations that were sort of partnering to meet that municipal obligation. That just sounds like a positive thing, is that, I mean, obviously, we have multiple municipalities that sort of share out, but do it, do we, we have buy-in from, do we have buy-in from, say, the mall, from, from...
Well, yeah, about everybody that, you know, we serve, the mall, the target area, the target commercial area provides us, I think it's Vision Ventures, I think is the name of the group, the Williamsport Home, Susquehanna Health, the colleges, I mean, we have pretty much everybody that, you know, would be a logical partner, has become a partner.
It's neat to see so many people sort of participating in something that can do a lot of good in the community. Thanks, Bill.
We'll move on to the next page, which is vehicle operations. One thing, we'll try to stay on schedule as best we can here, but one thing that all of this reminded me of, that I probably get as common a request for this as anything else, and I don't know, we can talk about it afterwards, but there are many people that have requested if there's anything that the council could do to provide, encourage Megabus access, even if there was a stop down at 15 and 80, that then, you know, maybe could tie into RVT's service into Williamsport, that that would be a great thing to give access to New York especially. So anyway, next page, vehicle operations.
Vehicle operations, under personal services, supervision, $312,000; drivers' wages, $1,850,000. That includes 34, full-time and one-part-time driver. With the possible Clinton County service, we'd be operating over 900,000 miles a year. Workers' comp, $168,000, for a total of $2,330,000. Purchase of services, training and safety, which is for all divisions of RVT, $45,000. Transfer to our Trade and Transit Center budget, $550,000. Bus fuel, $500,000, which is significantly lower than past years because of the CNG. I should mention, we have, we just received two more CNG buses, and we have 12 on order, so the state has really been supportive of our CNG effort, and within about a year, by 2018, about 80% of our fleet, main fleet, will be CNG. Oil and grease, $15,000; shop equipment, $5,000; uniforms, $15,000; printing and copies, $25,000; primarily a ride guide and fare box supplies. Advertising, $125,000. Insurance for our fleet, which is through a, called Safety, it's a statewide transit insurance pool, partially self-insured, similar to how we do the healthcare with Benicon, $145,000. Insurance drivers, $200, for a total of $3,755,200. Then on the E, oh, that's the end of operations.
Yeah, go ahead. Questions? Thing nine, next question.
Actually, if you don't, sorry, I was trying to hold back there for a second. Just a quick question about the transfer to the Trade and Transit Center. A, why it was higher than projected this year, and then why it's up again this coming year?
It's, yeah, it's increasing because we now have Trade and Transit Two in operations, so, you know, all the different costs associated with that now are built into the Trade and built into the Trade and Transit Center budget. The reason we have a separate planning and Trade and Transit Center budget, because those are typically not considered operating costs. And so, so that our total operating budget doesn't show an ordinary number or total, we have a separate budget. So we can have a true picture snapshot of just our core operating budget.
And then just a quick question about the nature of the advertising. I, I know, I'm trying to remember what the number was from the first page that we're taking in on advertising. So obviously the, the advertising that we, that we sell on the buses, we're taking in, what, $21,500 this year. We spend $125,000. What's that, is that presumably mostly advertising for RVT, not so much for drivers, et cetera, but?
No, this is marketing RVT services, all our facility operations, whatever. One of our main marketing efforts is bonus buck for senior citizens, which is, if you're familiar with or not familiar with that, that's where they, it's like a green stamp program. If you remember the old SNA's green stamps where they collect bonus bucks every time they ride the bus, they can redeem them for different things. And it's kept our senior citizen ridership very stable and, and has increased lately. And again, there's a performance added to senior citizen ridership. So it's something we do to, you know, help us on the other end of the subsidy side of things, so.
Is there, I'm assuming that plenty of this happens with an RVT, but obviously a way to determine what's the most effective marketing strategy in terms of both outreach to senior citizens or outreach to, you know what I mean, that we're clearly getting banged for our buck on all that advertising, right? I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, if, you know, marketing 101 is the best advertising is, is word of mouth, which is 50%, you know, if you can generate that activity. And we're, and we're seeing that typically radio, newspaper, what have you, is still very good. But, you know, we're developing as much as we can through Facebook and those type of things. It's, that's, you know, shown to really be successful.
All right. Vehicle maintenance? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cat.
I just want to say, we're part of the bonus buck program.
Go to the downtown, so, yes, we have several.
And the seniors, the seniors really love it. They really do. It's, it's an incredible program.
Yeah, it is. It really is.
We've been doing that for several, a lot of years.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But it really does work. They do work.
It's good.
Great. Go ahead.
Next, okay, maintenance on page five. Personal services, supervision, $57,569. Mechanics wages, $470,000. Bus repairs, this supports a fleet of 35 buses, including our three trolleys, $248,500. Material and supplies, $25,000. Uniforms, $13,000. Tires and tubes, $60,000 for a total of $874,069.
Questions? Seeing none.
Next page is our planning budget. On the revenue side, on this page, we have both revenues and expenditures because it is separate from our main operating budget. And under projected revenues, section eight, Grant County, $56,250. And that's federal money that passes through the county, through the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And again, that partially funds our planning budget. Then we receive money directly from the Federal Transit Administration, $100,000. We match that with $37,500. Then there's a transfer from the operating budget of $450,000. And a transfer from other sources of $170,000 for a total of $813,750. And the planning budget is, really represents also our contract services. So in the transfer from other services, or other sources, are dollars that we reimburse from management for the parking authority, also best transit to the north. That's where those dollars that we get reimbursed for contract management, that's where those dollars appear. And then projected expenditures, salaries, $613,250, related benefits of FICA life insurance and health insurance. Surveys that we're required to do, $15,000. Planning expenses, $30,000. Special study, $50,000, which includes an allocation for the Park Avenue study. And then transition contingency expenses, $10,000 for eight, a total of $813,750.
Questions? All righty. Next page.
Next one is the Trade and Transit Center budget. Trade and Transit Center lease rental income, which comes from a variety of sources for a total of $210,000. That's revenue from our share of the Third Street parking garage, Community Theater League, Uptown Music Collective, Susquehanna Transit. So there's also dollars that we get from our CNG fueling station, fuel sale, fuel sales, and also money from the Church Street parking facility. So, let's see, the, well, again, the total of the revenues is $1,203,500. And then on the expenditure side, salaries of $210,000. Again, life, FICA, life insurance, health insurance, purchases of services, $250,000. Supplies and materials, $23,500. Continuancy, $2,500. Desk service, $613,500. And then if we have any money that we get from raising money for exhibits in the Peter Eric Transportation Museum, we've budgeted a number there, you know, whether that actually happens, that's hard to say. But we're budgeting $50,000, again, for a total of $1,203,500.
Questions? Ms. Mead.
Just one quick question. This, this is where the, sorry, Bill, I'm trying to track down the numbers, but there's no labels on the pages. This is where, so the transfer to the Trade and Transit Center on page four, line 502081010.
Yes.
Winds up on line 49240, or, excuse me, line 43720, transfer from WVT, right? Nope, sorry. Next one over 43440. I apologize. Lines up, winds up there, right?
Yeah.
But I'm showing it at 525 on 2016's actual estimated and 425.
Yeah, let's see, on page four, transfer Trade and Transit, $550,000. And, and I'm showing $450,000 in the 2017 proposed budget on page seven. And I don't have a good answer for you right now. I got to figure that one out, to be honest.
All right, fine. Just, just asking. If it's paperwork stuff, it's paperwork stuff. But just trying to figure out, I guess, more why the actual, where that extra hundred grand went between those two budgets or if it went somewhere else. Anyway.
For both actual and for proposed.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I would assume the proposed element then relates to whatever, wherever that hundred grand went. It also went into that proposed number somewhere else. But anyway, okay, that was.
I will have to go back and review that to see where, you know.
Okay, that's.
I lost $100,000.
She just found $100,000.
Yeah, I know. Hey, wait a second. So we could use $100,000.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out because, and again, I don't have a good answer right now, but I will have one.
All right. Thanks, thanks. That's all.
Any other questions? Then moving along. Page eight.
Okay, page eight. Under page eight, this is our capital projects budget. And this is what we anticipate for capital projects in 2017 that happen or will be funded. This is primarily two capital projects, the purchase of CNG transit vehicles, which is reflected under the federal share, FTA, $565,585. And the state share, $3,509,674. And the amount that RVT has to match, $107,534. You'll find that if, remember the past, for years, the federal share typically was 80% of the capital cost. Those dollars have disappeared. And under Act 89, that's one of the positives that came out of Act 89, where there's additional funding for transit. So they sort of picked up where the federal government left off. And, and that's resulted in a very positive situation for RVT because of the extra funding we've received for CNG buses. They've accelerated our replacement process because of Act 89, which is a really good thing. Local match from the county, $100,000. Streetscape match, $50,000. And Streetscape Capital Projects, you should have gotten a replacement page, Joe, I think. And that should have been $3 million, not $300,000. And that's the Third Street Revitalization Gateway Plan, which is a combination of originally, we are in that number when we had put it together and submitted to council, including the hope that we were getting money from the foundation. So that's still there and, and we're working on just how to deal with that. But we do feel that we are going to be successful in getting some grants that we've submitted, multimodal grants, so that we can keep these Third Street revitalization process moving. So it's a total of $7,332,793. And then on the expenditure side, RVT projects, $4,075,259. You have a local match of $207,534. And $50,000 in a match and then $3 million as a reflect, which is reflective of the East Third Street Gateway Plan, the first phase that we anticipate to commence in 2017.
Questions? Seeing none. I believe that brings us to the end of that budget. All right. If there are no others, we will move along to the next section, which is income.
Income estimates.
Income estimates of the journal fund.
Income estimates, starting on page four. And this also is, you can look at, I think, the page, you received an updated page tonight, which is the projected revenues, real estate taxes current, which shows how we developed the real estate tax number. How that was developed was, if you look at the first line on them, again, is a total of $12,974,348. And this is determined by a calculation, which you can see up on the screen there. And you have before you, the page shows that the market value of Williamsport taxable real estate as provided by the county, that's $957,662,60. The assessed value ratio remains at 100%. Therefore, applying the proposed real estate tax rate of 14.82 generates real estate tax revenue of $14,192,552. And so to get to the budget amount, we subtracted estimated LERT abatements of $90,000, applied a collection rate of 92, 92%, which then gives you a budget of $12,974,348. However, I should mention that, that the mayor on Thursday night is going to offer some amendments to the budget that would reduce the millage from 14.82 down to 14.72. In other words, instead of .35 mils, it would be .25 mils. And he will also propose a increase in revenues in a particular line item of about $100,000 as an offset to the reduction of the millage from .35 to .25. So, but the numbers that we're going over now reflect the real estate increase of .35 mils. So as I mentioned, real estate current is $12,974,348. Prior real estate collections, $815,000. The wage tax earned income of $2,100,000. Nothing for mercantile, that's rolled into business privilege. Local services tax, $1,075,000. Mechanical devices, $15,500. Business privilege mercantile tax of $2 million, which now recognizes the 300, approximately $300,000 that, you know, was in litigation for some time, but now is included in the line item. Prior mercantile business privilege, $20,000. Real estate transfer, $220,000. Interest and penalties, $240,000. Discounts allowed the same amount. And then the $1 million we're showing now, as we did the last couple of years, $1,500,000 is the estimated tax anticipation note proceeds for a total of $20,719,848.
Thank you. Questions on the taxes? A couple that I have. One, I wanted to clarify what you said about business privilege mercantile tax. When you said it, it includes the 300,000 that had been held up in litigation, you mean for 2017's proposed year, it includes that number?
Yes.
The 300,000 that we had set aside for past years is reflected elsewhere in the budget.
It's on, yeah, it's reflected on the equity page, page one.
And so the $2 million proposed number, we would expect in 2018, with no other changes that might occur between now and then, that it would stay 200, or $2 million, not go back down to 1.7 million.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify that because I always thought that was true, but I wasn't 100% sure. The other thing that I guess I would point out generally, council receives in the back of our budget book, a comparative equity statement with actual balances that are available on a variety of things, including the tax revenue. And one of the things that I like to look at to understand the state of the economy of Williamsport is, are the tax revenue lines that change with the state of the economy, which include things like wage taxes, local services tax, and business privilege and mercantile taxes. And the, the data that we have here goes back to about 2012, which itself was a fairly strong year economically for the city. And in each of those cases, more or less, some a little bit more, some a little bit less, we are about flat in revenue since 2012. So the good news of that is in 2012, given it was a good year, we're still at that level. The bad news is, is we are not, have not grown from that level, which probably is to be expected, given the, the level of natural gas activity that occurred that year. But it would be nice to, if we could all see other sources of additional revenue reflective of increased economic activity. So I guess that I would classify that news economically as somewhat neutral overall, which doesn't mean anything, I know. But it is a number that I like to review every year and thought I would point out. If there are no other questions on this section, licenses and permits and fines and forfeits?
Yeah. As you mentioned, just to mention that it's a five-year comparative sheet that you mentioned is a five-year budget comparison as it relates to the comparative equity statement as well and projected expenditures as well as revenues, as you mentioned. So it just gives you a snapshot of all, how the budgets have looked over the last five years. Under license permits, TV cable franchise, $218,000. Other, $120,000. That includes things like plumber license, contractor registrations, building permits, $300,000. As you mentioned, in the economy, that's very reflective of the state of the economy, I think, in terms of what is going on, construction purposes. And we're sort of at the lower end of the five-year average and now we're proposing $300,000. So we certainly hope that that starts picking up. Street excavation permits, $45,000. Fines and forfeits, traffic fines state, the city share of those, $13,000. Traffic fines restitution received from the county, $45,000. Traffic fines local, $2,000. Magistrate fees, $95,000 for a total of $155,000.
Questions? Seeing none. Next page.
Interest, received $3,000. Tax investment income, $175. The indirect cost reimbursement from RVT, $75,000. Indirect costs for John Gray, oh, nothing. That's why I find that interesting. Recreation program income, $20,000. A significant increase from what the budget was, $6,000. Pool admissions, $40,000. Pool concessions, $1,000. Rescue operations fee. As we did in 2016, we didn't really budget. It's, it's sort of, that's one that's really hard to budget. But we did receive $2,500. And hopefully we'll, we'll be lucky in getting a like amount this, next year. Towing fees, $20,000. Rental inspections, $40,000. Special events, we increased to $35,000, which ties into, obviously, the recreation. Special events, we increased to $35,000, which ties into, obviously, the recreation budget. We sort of built in a performance factor in terms of recreation budget and how it relates to the recreation director's salary, and so that's one of the things that we put in, is incentive for the recreation to generate additional money for special events, and then that's reflective in how her salary was set. Misplaced income workers' comp, $10,000. Misplaced income codes, $1,000 from the controller, $100. Finance, other $90,000, that's a significant decrease. There was a special reimbursement, pension reimbursement, that was always put in this particular line item, about 60, I think, $60,000, Joe. So it was a special additional supplemental pension reimbursement that has disappeared effective next year. So that's sort of a negative in our budget. Fire, $5,000. Police, $90,000. Streets and Parks, $2,500. Treasury, $8,000. Surplus property sales, again, we really haven't budgeted for that. It's one of those, if we get anything, you know, that's a plus. And we use the internet to advertise our surplus property on propertyroom.com. Real estate, sales restricted, not budgeting anything there. From Benicon or Health Insurance, there are plus, you can see that we had a very positive year in 2016 of $590,000. So we did up it from what we budgeted in 2016, but we still want to be on the conservative side, so the number there is $400,000 for a total of $867,600 for departmental earnings.
Questions for page five? Seeing none, page six, please.
Page six, grants from the state beverage license tax, $20,000. This includes licensing fees, including fines. Public utility tax, $20,000. Pension contribution is $1 million now, so they did sort of make up for the one supplemental reimbursement we get, and now the main reimbursement has increased, and so we're anticipating $1 million for next year. And Lua taxes, $320,000. Administrative tax collection office, this represents our reimbursement for our collection of school taxes, $31,500. Pennsylvania Council Arts and Showers Estates don't show anything budgeted. School resource officer reimbursement from the school district, $48,000. The cops hiring grant was in previous budget, so that grant has been exhausted, and so nothing has been budgeted. County liquid fuels allocation, $23,543, for a total of $423,043. And then other contributions, there's only two. John did come through with $30,000 here, and then also a transfer from the Williamsport Parking Authority of $75,000. However, that number may, that amount might have to be changed, and so that, I guess, can be discussed on Thursday in terms of how to handle that. And then total others, $105,000, for a total income for the general fund of $23,996,666.
Questions for this page? Seeing none. I believe that brings us to the end of our income estimates. Next is general government, Office of the Mayor. Hey, we got ahead of schedule. That's never happened, ever.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you. Under salaries, $95,563. FICA, $7,300. Life insurance, $370. Workers' comp, $75. Pensions, $14,775. Health insurance, $24,600. Total personnel services, $142,683. Purchase of services, travel, economic development proposed for 2017, zero. Hearing and litigation, $75,000. Office rent, $35,200. Special study, zero. SPCA, $28,000. Historical society, $1,000. Alliance, zero. Contingency, zero. Citizens Corps, $1,000. Newbury Community Partnership, $2,000. And a new line item, Victorian Christmas, $1,000. You did receive a request from P.C. O'Connor, and if anybody attended this year, you would have noticed that it was a true economic development experience. There are hundreds of people throughout the region and outside this region that attended, and personally, I think it's something that we should pursue. I don't believe we do enough for the historic district in the city, and I believe this $1,000 is actually part of the economic development. You notice that I decided not to take any dollars this year. $400 was spent this year, and I decided to take those dollars and give it to Victorian Christmas. General office supplies, $4,000. Support equipment, $1,300. Total department expenses, $291,183. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we turn to Departments of Streets and Parks. On page 14. Mr. Silla, how are you this evening?
Wonderful, good evening. President Williamson, members of council. First time going through this, so I'm going to assume from the people before me, I don't have to go over the 2016, we're just covering proposed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, starting on page 14, Office of the Director, Personnel Services, salaries, FICA, $17,900. Life insurance, $600. Workers' comp, $7,800. Pensions, $59,100. Health insurance, $59,600. Purchase of services, for a total of $379,506. Purchase of services, training, $1,150. Office rental, $7,900. Contracted services, $40,500. Supplies and materials, general office supplies, $2,600. Support equipment, $2,500. And telephones, $7,300. Brings total to $441,456.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just a question, on the contract services line item. The document's not showing any budget for 2016, any transfers, any budget with transfers, and yet we actually spent $66,800 on contract services? What is that related to?
Well, that covers John Markley's salary.
Okay. I guess I'm just wondering how we didn't transfer the money in, and how we didn't budget the money, and yet somehow we paid it.
That actually doesn't add up in the salaries line item.
Got it.
There was a position that wasn't filled outside of the current contract position that already existed in 2016. So we'll be moving money down from the salary line item to cover the costs that are showing in this presentation.
Got it. And then, then the ongoing 2017 proposed cost for contract services? I'm just wondering what those are.
Ongoing, it'll close out Markley. He plans on retiring in 2017, and then there's also some planned expenditures for potentially providing some additional services from the current city engineer as a transition goes out the door midway through next year.
Okay. All right. So this is Grado's problem again, huh?
I think.
Got it. Okay, that's everything.
Mr. Allison?
Yeah, related to that, under the salary detail for Streets and Parks, some of those things are in there, I think. I mean, they're all in there, but there's, looks like some reorganization in there. And could you, could you go through that?
Well...
Tell us who is doing what in there? What's going to be different?
Well, the big change is going to be the engineers, going to be under our direction now. And I think in the past, a good portion of that salary had come out of community development. So that's, that's the big change there. Of course, you have general manager, assistant general manager, and then the engineers is the big change.
Okay. And the assistant general manager, John Markley, then?
Currently, yes.
Yeah. And then that's the decrease of almost 20,000.
Right.
And that takes into account him only being there part of the year, and then somebody to fill his place?
That will most likely be the salary of the new...
Okay, that's the salary.
New assistant, yeah.
Okay. And we have the engineer and the office manager.
Who is invaluable to the city administration, by the way.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay. Just wanted to get the details on the salary detail there. Thank you.
Sure.
And one of the things I note is that the engineer shows a one and a half. It's not that that would be permanent, but that the administration is proposing, I think with some discussion with council, that there be some transfer of the institutional knowledge over a half of the year or so, assuming we can make a hire, which might be tough itself. But there's 40 or 200 years of information locked in Mr. Grado's head. I'm betting on the 200 years of information, given how much he can recall, and at least a little bit of time to be able to transfer some of that invaluable knowledge from one side to the other. Either that, or we'll have to get it out through surgery. And so that's a part of it, and I know that...
Exploratory surgery.
Yeah, exploratory surgery. Maybe some, I don't know, street cuts in there with some really smooth patching to follow. I also note that I think part of that contracted services that you mentioned was to get a little bit more squeezed out of John's brain with maybe a little contracted part-time work afterwards, especially when emergencies appear maybe on a daily basis after his retirement. Is that right, at least for the next few months after that?
Yeah. And I can tell you, in the past year, he's been a real asset to me, you know, and I think he's probably to the point, he may roll his eyes when he sees me coming, but...
Join the club.
He's been a tremendous help, yeah.
All right, if there are no other questions, then we can move on to the next page. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith?
What is the exact number now proposed for the engineer for an entire year? The exact number?
As far as I know, $80,000.
$80,000.
I'm sorry, no, there's not a number proposed for that original, or that specific position. That'll be identified through the hiring process.
How much are we budgeting now?
$80,000 is budgeted, but as you'll see, the number is budgeted at 1.5. That'll cover a portion of the current engineer's salary through his separation in September, I'm sorry, in July, along with maybe midway through the beginning of the year, bringing someone in for a transition, then with some additional consulting money available for after the July transition.
So what's that transition period for the proposed engineer? What's that dollar number proposed?
Part of that is, right now is 13.5, which was previously, so it would be half of that number, because I'm retiring in July. Part of my time is charged to community development admin, the community development projects, and to the general, the general fund line item. So some of that time I charge currently, like from January through July. That was budgeted last year at 13.5.
What is the actual proposed amount of dollars for that transition period for that person that's going to be hired? What is that number?
I'm not sure what that is. I mean, I'm not sure what the salary for the new engineer would be at this point. I think it's in the budget.
$80,000 proposed at this time for the city engineer. Okay, but what is the number proposed during that transition time? The proposed number?
$20,000 for consulting services and $60,000 for the engineer.
$20,000 for consulting?
Right.
And 60?
For the engineer.
Mr. Smith, can I clarify something on that? The consulting services actually in the budget is coming out of the contracted services line, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And so in terms of the salary number, the salary, the actual expenditure of the $80,000 in salary wouldn't occur unless two things happen. One would be you hired essentially at the beginning of the year, and two, half of 13.5 specifically was spent on Mr. Grado's salary, not his contracted amount. So the $80,000 number includes half a year for his salary, right? And so, otherwise, it's wiggle room, depending on what's negotiated at the hire?
Effectively, it's $73,250 potential.
But that would, that's assuming they're hired January 1st.
Right, precisely.
Okay, now, here's something we do need to know, and we've discussed this previously. When is the search going to begin in advertisements for this engineering position? When is that going to start? Because we can't hire somebody June 15th.
We're looking at hiring somebody in March. The first thing we have to do is replace the HR director, and that final selection will be made by the end of this week. So that's the first thing we're going to do. Once we get the newly hired director in, which the candidate's looking, they have to get at least two weeks ahead of time with their former employee, and then we're going to work on that process to get that out soon as possible.
So when is the advertising going to begin?
I would say by the end of January. That's our goal.
Okay, we'll keep checking on that to make certain, because we just can't wait until June 15th and hire somebody. It isn't going to work. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I understand it, the hiring process for civil engineer in this case is a longer process than many of the hiring, because you're probably, Mayor and I had a discussion about this the other day, looking statewide for people who are, I'm not sure, the credential certified, public engineers. And so I think Mr. Grado said, there's a couple of different places where you might advertise that, one being at the Pennsylvania Municipal League, I think, is what you said, and then the other being, I forget what he said here, Association of Civil...
Association of Society of Civil Engineers.
Society of Civil Engineers. And so, given that you would have, probably be having someone travel in or move in from outside the immediate area, at least there's a chance that would occur, you know, it may take some time between when you advertise and when you actually hire. So the sooner we can advertise, the more overlap we would have, as Mr. Smith suggests, but also the sooner, given that even if we advertise very quickly, it's unlikely that we would expend the budgetary dollars immediately, thus saving some budget money, given the time it might take to complete the hiring process. Other questions about this specifically? Ms. Mealy?
Just so I understand, is there a reason why we can't advertise simultaneous with working on a hiring for the HR? I'm just concerned that all of this is still very nebulous, and nobody seems to have actually moved on this.
That's one of the issues right there.
So we require an HR director to advertise for an engineering position?
I would think so. Yes, he has that expertise as well, and typically, the person that does that is the HR director.
Okay, well, it probably would have been my suggestion perhaps to get the HR director started on that before we didn't have one, but seeing that we haven't, it might be wise for us to work on that description pending the arrival of an HR director, and then, I just think, I'm afraid that we're going to push this back further and further.
Actually, we are, we are in-house, we're in with John.
Actually, we are, we are doing that in-house, we're in the, with John and Finance Department. Um, we're putting those credentials together, but ultimately, uh, the HR director's gonna have to work hand-in-hand, because they're gonna be, uh, involved in the interviewing process.
I, I, and maybe those things can be coordinated, right? If, if we get a job description prepared by the end of the year, maybe, because, because some of the applicants would be coming from outside the area for a position like this, you know, maybe you have a longer response time. Maybe you say, you know, the, uh, position remains open for applicants for, let's say, a month instead of a typical couple weeks, um, which would then allow you to have the HR director get in, get their feet wet, and then you could start the interviewing process.
We can have a strong, the best candidate possible, the most qualified, and it's gonna be very, very difficult to replace Mr. Grado, and that's why we're gonna do a very, very thorough search.
True.
Don't, don't we have a, a contract with the, uh, HR company currently? What, when does that deadline up? When's that expired?
Well, it runs through the end of the year.
Well, don't they have to provide an HR person until the end of the year?
Uh, I guess so. Correct.
Well, if they're not, I wouldn't think we would be paying them.
That's an excellent point.
So, who's the lead person on that?
Pardon me?
I'm wondering who the point person is to make sure that we have some sort of HR services, or that we get our money back.
Exactly, if we're, if we're paying for an HR person, they're supposed, if the other one quit, they quit the company, they didn't quit us, they should've supplied someone for whether it's four weeks, six weeks, or eight weeks.
Excellent point.
And as we stated before, the, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me? Using my teacher's voice, so, um, what we have decided, and I've spoken to several council members about this, to have more accountability, and also to make sure we can find a quality individual that will remain here instead of being under a contract, we're gonna be hiring somebody within, and that means a city employee, uh, the latest individual. One of the reasons why she's leaving is because of the uncertainty, because you have a contract with, with the company. Uh, Bill and I have been in contact with Mr. Felice. He's the gentleman that owns the company, and we have spoken to him and said that we need somebody immediately, because they're doing, they were gonna do their research in regards to hiring somebody, and then we decided to bring somebody in-house. So, if we're not gonna receive any services from them, we're not gonna pay them, and that's, that's basically the bottom line.
Well, don't we have a contract with them that states we have to pay them till the end of the year, and they have to supply a human being for that position? If we choose to, to change that, and not, and not have them come in, we still owe them the money?
No, no, because there's actually, we have the opportunity, and Bill, if you'd like to touch upon that, we have the opportunity to cease that contract at any point, and we are looking at that.
Well, you have to give them so much notice, what's the notice time? Thirty days?
Ninety days.
Okay.
There seems to be a, a real problem here, a real problem there. I think it needs to get resolved. You can't operate a business without an HR person. We need somebody in here soon, now.
Well, that's why, as I said, we have decided in-house, and we are gonna have somebody working for the city in the next couple weeks, but in that interim time, we've been in communication with Mr. Felice, and they're going to provide, um, assistance to the office, and that's what they're doing, in regards to updating different manuals and things of that sort. So, there has been that communication. Believe me, we're not getting short-changed whatsoever. We have decided, uh, in regards to communication with Mr. Felice, that we are not going to renew the contract, so, starting January first, we're gonna have an employee that's in-house. Would you like to touch upon anything?
Sure. Um, other than he sent notice, uh, our desire not to renew the contract within the ninety-day timeframe.
Can I ask a question? If, who's handling any HR problems?
Just a second, let me make sure Mr. Smith is finished. I'm trying, okay, take it.
Who's handling any of the HR problems? Because she's been gone already for what, a couple of weeks now?
She's coming in as an ad, as needed basis.
So, therefore, there are some HR problems, but there is somebody that...
Yes, yes, she is, and she was part of the interview process, along with Mr. Nichols and myself in the last two weeks. So, yes, she has left, but she is coming in to assist the department, she's also gonna assist in regards to the transition from the new employee that's gonna be working in-house. So, yes, we are getting, we are getting service from Felice.
Well, I guess, what we're finding, the problem is the fact that there's somebody not here from nine to five every day. She's only called in on, if there's a specific problem, and HR is a very important part of your, your whole structure, and to have her, uh, to be called in when there's a problem, I mean, if, a lot of places, there's problems every day. So, therefore, you know, not to have any, if she's not here from nine to five, it's a problem, and for us to be paying for her services full-time, I think we all find that a, a problem.
Well, actually, we're not.
Well, if she's coming in, what is she paying, being, getting paid?
They are actually, they are not getting paid, and we can provide those figures for you, but we have reduced the amount of payments, we're not paying them full-time, because we're not getting a full-time person coming in the City Hall, that's, you know, it's pretty obvious. So, there is that, I mean, here's a situation, that somebody quits, and you need to bring somebody in right away, you just can't hire someone that's inept the next day, you have to do, do a research, and you have to start interviewing people, and that's what we have done. But in regards to the, the service, we're getting part-time service, but we're not gonna, we're not paying, we're not gonna pay full-time service for part-time work. We're not gonna do that.
It's very important, it's a very important position. I'm very happy to hear that you're gonna bring it back in-house. I, I think it's, you know, it's important that we have control over this in more ways than one, and I mean, she gave two weeks' notice, and I thought that was, that left us short-tripped.
Absolutely.
It really did, and especially this time of year, and especially when we have other positions, main positions that have to be filled, and I mean, it's, and I think this is a sad thing that we have dealt with this company now for how many years? Two years, three years?
One.
Oh, I'm talking, well, how long was Allen with us?
Two years.
Two years. So, to, to have this company not, uh, having, representing us on a twenty-four-seven basis, okay, at this point, I find it very dis-- you know, disappointing.
I, I agree, and that's why we're not continuing the contract, but, believe me, we've been quite busy, because if you look at department heads, we just had to replace a recreation director. So, I agree, there's been a lot of, uh, busy work in regards to hiring new people, um...
And there's a lot that goes on, so therefore, a, a person really has to be good. In this day and age, that is such an important position.
That's a very, very critical position, especially with Obamacare, depending upon what's gonna happen there, and all different types of lawsuits, it is a very critical position, but rest assured, we will let you know who the new hirer's going to be at the end of the week, communicate to City Council, let you know who this person is, uh, we'll provide the credentials, et cetera. We have actually, uh, three really, really strong candidates, and I'm, I'm sure that everyone's gonna be pleased with their credentials, um, all three of them have worked with unions, and I think that this new individual's gonna be an asset to the city, but, as I said before, we're get, we're only getting part-time help. Thank goodness, we're getting something, okay, but we're not gonna pay one hundred percent, and we're not getting a person every day. Just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison?
Okay, just so I can have our present situation clear, um, we're, we're getting part-time help. Is this through the, the agency?
Uh, yeah, she, she's, uh, as I understand it, when, she comes in one needed.
And, and this is the, the same person that we have as...
What do you mean, the, yeah, right.
Yes.
But she...
She's working someplace else now. She, like I said, you know, today is a, today's a different...
She's not at that agency, she's working somewhere else.
Correct.
But the agency is still providing her to us on a part-time...
Yes.
Okay.
Like, is this, like, under lunch hour?
Councilman Allison, she's under contract with that company. I'm not sure what the details of her contract with that company are, so, they may have come to some sort of an agreement, uh, through the remainder of this year, which was the term of the Felice contract.
So, okay, then, are we paying her, or are we paying...
We're paying Felice a monthly fee. We have not paid anything for the month of December.
Okay, but we're paying the agency.
If we pay anything, the payment will be made to the agency, Felice Associates, not to the individual themselves.
The contracts with Felice.
Right, okay, but we, we canceled that, but we're still kinda working through it.
The cancellation's effective at the end of the contract.
It's at the end of the year.
Then, um...
They breached the contract, though. Technically, they breached it by her leaving and not putting someone in her place immediately.
True.
So, they breached the contract.
I, yeah, I would think the solicitor should review that.
Okay, and then...
Absolutely.
Um, does she come in, is, is there, as needed basis, are there a certain number of hours a week, or just when we have an issue, we call?
She hasn't indicated any, what, how many hours she's supposed to come in. She comes in after hours, so to speak, because she has another job, so I'm not sure what the relationship is between her and Felice.
So, we have, she's been doing this already, this is...
Yeah, in other words, she, the, she arranged interviews with, uh, potential, uh, new HR directors, you know, and so, she was, she did do some of that, um, but I think as everybody's indicated, there hasn't been full-time services, so I would think that adjustment in the monthly bill is proper, but I think we need to have a solicitor to look at the contract, just to see what our position is.
Are, are we keeping track of her hours, or is Felice keeping track of them?
Well, she's under contract with Felice, so I presume that he is managing her hours.
But we have no way to verify it?
No, but I think we should.
Okay.
I think that's all going to have to take place, and, and with the separation of, you know, with the end of the contract, and any kind of close-out costs, all that needs to be taken into consideration. That'd be my position.
Yeah.
Okay, then, Mr. Lumen, could you, uh, touch base with Mr. Nichols and, and review basically how we close this out, and, and including saving money if we're not getting services, uh, for that? The, the other thing that I would suggest, if she's, uh, on, as an ad-needed basis, then, as the mayor works with Mr. Grado to develop, um, the job description for the next, uh, city engineer, then she can review it from the perspective of the law and, and HR, because that's needed, and it is as needed, um, and, uh, do the next step, uh, hopefully by the end of the year then, which is to place that, uh, probably three ads, one locally, one, uh, for the Society of Civil Engineers, which Mr. Grado mentioned, and the third, uh, would be for, uh, the Pennsylvania Municipal League. All of those are fairly simple tasks, probably take her an hour to do that job, uh, and a couple hours to review the, the job description, um, and then we can get that ad out there, um, and then, of course, you'd, you'd have at least a month, uh, to be able to solicit, uh, applications, um, before you and, and your new HR director would have to do, you know, the, the heavy-duty lifting there of going through an interview process. Um, I think that would, uh, uh, be a, a workable timeline that would both help increase the overlap and, and address Mr. Smith's concerns, but also not to put too much burden on an understaffed administration.
Also, if I may, uh...
President, Mr. Grado has a, has actually agreed to volunteer to participate in that interview process, so he's gonna sit down with us to help interview the candidates as well.
Sounds like a great idea. Kat, could I see your hand again?
I was just gonna say, you know, for somebody who's already left us in a large chair, she really has, um, how, how can we trust her in the hiring process of somebody to fill her position? I find that very, uh, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it.
Well, we're very, believe me, when you got the notice, and when you get a notice, either then, a situation like this, or you, or you get a notice right before Williamsport welcomes the world, and you have the final recreation director, believe me, it's been a little challenging and disappointing.
And if that means we're ready to move on, I believe Mr. Summer's back's getting sore from standing there.
(laughing) I'm good.
And so, I think that takes us to page fifteen, unless I've lost complete track of where we were. Does that sound right?
That sounds right. Page fifteen, Parks Department. Personnel Services, salaries, two hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars, overtime, eight thousand five hundred, uh, FICA, twenty thousand nine hundred, life insurance, one thousand one fifty, uh, workers' comp, twelve thousand, pensions, eighty-eight thousand six fifty, health insurance, one hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, for a total of five hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars. Purchase of services, uh, heat, one thousand five hundred, tree removal, one thousand five hundred, equipment rental, five hundred, Brandon Park Electric Bills, three thousand, Ways Garden Electric Bills, three hundred, Bowman Field Electric Bills, five thousand five hundred, Memorial Park Electric Bill, seven hundred, Youngs Woods Electric Bills, one thousand, uh, water and sewer, one thousand five hundred, Shade Tree Commission, zero, Ways Garden Commission, one thousand, Festival of Lights, two thousand four hundred. Supplies, page sixteen, uh, supplies and materials, gas and oil for the vehicles, seventeen thousand, uh, protective clothing, one thousand eight hundred, uh, other park materials, seventeen thousand, trees, flowers, shrubs, one thousand, uh, Brandon Park Tree Maintenance, eight fifty, uh, equipment, uh, twelve thousand, uh, equipment repairs, vehicle repairs, seven thousand, uh, repairs to other equipment, nine thousand, Bowman Field Improvements, ten thousand, total expense, six hundred fifteen thousand nine eighty-eight.
Thank you. Questions on page fifteen and sixteen? Mrs. Katz?
Uh, on question of the tree removal, um, to me, that seems kind of low with all the trees that we're taking down at this point. Are, are we talking about, uh, boy, I can't see you. (laughing) Uh, are we taking all the trees down, like the ash trees that are, are diseased and everything? Is this, is this what that line item means?
Uh, part of it, yeah.
So, it's, you know, that seems like awfully low for all the, the problems that we're having in that area, and the other side, too, is new trees and flowers and shrubs. I know we're trying to go for, for grants for that, uh, but that's also seems awfully low, too. Is that just in my calculations of what we're going through right now?
Yes.
So, that's not gonna fulfill all the, the dead trees and everything that we have to try and rebuild here?
No, um, hopefully, as part of our, uh, tree vitalize, we can, uh, address that in the park there.
Uh, Mr. Allison?
Um, the, uh, twelve thousand dollars for equipment, what is that for?
We refer to it as bat wings, the, uh, the blades that fold down on the tractor to, uh, mow in the parks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the current set's pushing fifteen years old, so they're definitely on borrowed time.
Okay. The, um, at Memorial, uh, the, uh, Youngs Woods Electric Bill, what, what do we use electricity at Young Woods?
Uh, lighting.
At night?
Lighting out there, yeah.
Obviously, at night, but, uh, for what, the basketball court, or...
Uh, in the park, there's a few lights in the park, yeah.
And Memorial, just a, a general question on, well, um, I've wondered, Memorial Park, uh, when we took down the basketball hoops and the, the stands that they're on and everything, do we still have those?
Yes.
Stored somewhere? Are they usable?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I would imagine, you know, it's a few thousand dollars' worth of equipment there, I would think.
Hmm, I couldn't put a price tag on it, and I'm not sure how old they are, but they're, they're operable.
So, we could, if, if it ever came up, we could put them, or use them to replace other basketball hoops?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, also at Memorial Park, um, I guess... Okay, and also at Memorial Park, I guess, well, I have a question about the swimming pool. Did we add any equipment as far as that's going to be installed in the pool?
We haven't added anything yet. We do have a piece that's yet to be installed.
Okay. That wasn't under Streets and Parks budget then?
I think that may have been purchased prior to my handling of anything in the budget here.
Oh, that was recreation, okay.
Yeah.
Who has some information?
Oh.
I, I, are you speaking of a new feature up for the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a new, there was a new feature purchased with the remaining funds from the reconstruction project that was, the major part of that was completed two years ago, but we've been doing small fixes, trying to find just minor leak repairs, things of that nature. So there were some funds remaining. John's in the process of looking at where the pipes stand at this point, and we believe that closing out that project, that we should have ample funds to get the current needs based upon a dye test that you guys performed this past fall.
So all the equipment was purchased at one time?
This was purchased after the initial round.
Yeah, there were, there were additional spaces for water features as part of the pool. When we executed the contract, we put three features in as part of the DCNR project. And I know that another feature was purchased, but we weren't able to install it prior to the beginning of the swimming season this year. So the intent is to put that feature in. I think there was a discussion with the Recreation Department.
And was approved through?
So there is a feature that's been purchased and would be installed in the spring. You can't, you'd have to...
Ask that question again, I don't think you heard your last question, what you just asked.
Recreation approved the purchase of that?
I'm not sure, I mean, it was purchased under Justin's directorship.
Can add some thoughts. Presently, we are, the Recreation Department is with the mayor in one of our last sessions, debating whether we're going to use that water feature. Stands now, we're looking at the possibility of frankly sending it back. But we have to make sure, if we send it back, it has to be, Mr. Grado knows more than I do. If someone else in the immediate area is willing to take it, then there's a little bit of an abeyance there. But we're looking to send it back to recoup the money if necessary. Unless things change, Mr. Grado and I have an appointment tomorrow to take a really good, closer look at the pool and the elements that are related to this feature as well. And we're going to have somebody joining us that will give us some background information and some maintenance considerations and such as well. So kind of up in the air at this point in time, we're waiting for that to take place. Then we'll have more, you know, more concrete information here. We're not quite there yet.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
We talked about this situation, Randy, in Public Works.
Okay.
As I understand it, seven-thousand dollars was spent on this like twenty-foot-high piece of equipment that was to be installed about a week, a week and a half before the pool closed. And Streets and Parks said, well, we have to drain the entire pool to put this up. The other situation that we found out was this item is to be installed over where the youngest children are, and this has some kind of a water dumping feature on it, which now presents a problem of very young people in the pool being exposed to this enormous amount of water coming out of this thing. And it was asked, why can't this thing be moved to another part of the pool? And the answer was, it can't be done. I have asked repeatedly what the charge is going to be to send this back to the factory. Typically, when you send things back, you have a restocking fee, and I have not been able to find that number out. I have asked several times what's going to happen to this because you can't keep something eight, nine months and then send it back. So this item that we had heard about is, it's really, from what I understand, it's up in the air. Nobody knows what's going to happen to it, other than it was spent seven-thousand dollars of money on this. And whether it could be used or not, I haven't gotten an answer.
Okay, that's fine for now, thank you.
Was this part of the original design of the rehabilitation of the pool?
The specific feature was, a water feature was set for this location.
Okay.
And it's designed to accommodate a certain amount of water flow gallons per minute. An inch and a half pipe, but, so it was a different feature. But one was planned for that loca, for the location.
Okay, and, but the purchase of it wasn't fact, the type of feature wasn't factored into the design?
Well, it wasn't the specific feature, it was, one, a feature was planned for that.
Okay, and there is a reason we didn't buy the planned feature?
It wasn't part of the contract, the contract was completed.
Okay.
So all of the contractor put in all the features under his contract, and we, or the city, had a new feature planned for it to be installed.
And because it was less than eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars, it didn't get a formal review?
Yeah, it was an administrative decision as far as purchasing the feature. The funds were there, as Joe indicated, the budget, the funds came under the budget amount. So there was additional funds available for the second feature after all the work was completed.
Okay, can we, you and Mr. Novella are going to go to review the onsite situation tomorrow, it sounds like. Can we also ask that by Wednesday or Thursday that we get an answer on the things like shipping and restocking fees?
Well, yeah, I know Jesse has been working with the water feature provider, and they indicated that they make them specifically, even though it's on request. That's why it took so long to get it when they initially did it, it was longer than was anticipated. So what they're, my understanding was, if they find someone else who wants to purchase the feature, then we'll be able to...
But otherwise, this not unplanned, specific feature that was purchased without council review because it was less and it was allowed for in the budget, will eat it, the price?
Well, either we, yeah, install it or we provide it someplace. And I think we might be able to negotiate with them, but I know Jesse has been working with the pool.
And I know Wednesday night she'll be presenting her budget. Could you give her fair warning that we might be asking her about that by Wednesday night? Not that it was her...
Right, I know she's...
...project to initiate, and so please tell her that we won't be accusing her of anything, she wasn't here. But if she has an answer from the supplier, I know that would be helpful for Mr. Smith's and the rest of our concerns. Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes, also in regards to that meeting tomorrow, and John did inform me about that, the consultant that's going to be there, we're going to ask that person what their opinion is with this piece of equipment. In their professional opinion, should it be installed or should it not be installed as well? So that's going to be part of the dialogue tomorrow.
And the original contractor had no role in choosing the feature? Because they, that, I know this is a new consultant, I think an unpaid consultant, but that consultant, contractor was an expert and was paid, but they had no role in choosing the feature?
I mean, as we're talking about...
So there's no recourse, the reason I ask is, there would be no recourse to that original contractor, is that correct?
Right, I mean, there's the general contractor who built it, but his contract is closed, he completed it.
But the designer?
The consultant, and actually, the consultant we used passed away, but somebody has taken over his business. I mean, they were consulted just to determine whether this particular feature that's provided was sufficient for the supply, and my understanding...
But not where it's appropriate thus?
Yeah, I think, and you know, it's, it's a, it's a feature, even, it is nineteen feet, and it's, it's the sails of the mast fill with water, and they went, and at some point, I guess, they dumped.
So it's something, more or less, there was a catalog, the administration liked it and picked it out, but there wasn't a recourse for us to go back and to a consultant or a contractor or a designer and go, hey, you let us pick out a feature that was inappropriate for the space?
That was not brought to Public Works either.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure if it went to Rec Commission before it was purchased, you know, last year.
Does it, well, we have representative?
Yeah, I was there, and it did come, Justin brought some photos. He was looking for some advice, he had several different features, I think four or five different features that he was looking at, and asked for the advice of the commission just to take a look at them and see what we thought would look the best and whatever else. And he was, he was going to purchase one of those, put it in.
Okay.
It was designed to fit in with the makeup of the pool itself, so therefore the sailing mast and what have you. Our concern with the committee, and which is still a concern, is that the placement of it in the smallest tot area, I guess, of the pool, that it might be a little bit overwhelming to have so much water dropping from nearly twenty feet. Some of the smaller kids might not be able to tolerate that. There was some thought about moving it, but as John said, just no other fixtures associated with putting it in. So we had the fixtures put in to accommodate additional features, we just didn't have this particular feature in there.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll have some more information available to us Wednesday night then. Other questions on this or anything else on this page? Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Well, one random thing on this particular item first. Is the manufacturer capable of offering any sort of consultation? Because it would seem like that would be a key question for the manufacturer. What zones are these particular types of features appropriate in a pool setting?
Yeah, I mean, I think it is, I mean, it's in an intermediate area. It's a feature for a splash pool area, but, and I'm, we could, I really have to kind of defer to Justin.
I guess just tell her you defer to her.
It's a standard feature that's built for splash pools, so I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, what the, how much water is actually dumped and is, if it's going to be an adverse area. I mean, it's in the intermediate, because the tot area is by the ramp section. And this section is where the umbrella is and the trio of fun, they call it. So it is in the intermediate area.
I thought that's what they call it, you, Bill and Joe, the trio of fun.
If this would have come to Public Works, John and I, being engineers, would have looked at all of these items beforehand and asked all the proper questions, it didn't happen.
And just, just one more question on that, just to be clear. So this was, in the total budgeted amount we had for pool construction, not for pool continued maintenance, we had an extra seven-thousand dollars plus the amount of money it's going to cost us to install the feature. Right, present in that budget. So this was, to a certain extent, discretionary funding, because it was money we'd anticipated spending on the construction.
I think there is an item in this budget for continuing the extenuating maintenance of the budget.
Yeah, we have a whole page.
That doesn't include the money for, this feature's been purchased two years, and so it was excess money on top of that.
I have further questions actually on this document.
Is your comment about the pool feature? Okay, so let me finish and then we'll go. Back to other issues related, page fifteen and sixteen.
Well, first off, Tom, just to follow up on Randy's question about Young's Woods, I guess maybe the, part of the question was, why has the bill for Young's Woods, why does it seem to have doubled in the course of a year or two? Have we installed extra lighting there or?
Just rate increase.
Okay, it just doesn't seem, that's not, all of the, all of the numbers have gone up with the exception of Brandon Park, but none of them have gone up as dramatically as Young's Woods. It would seem to indicate further lighting or maybe aging lighting that somehow or another is burning out faster. I don't know, there's, there's no reason...
We haven't installed new lighting, yeah.
And just because I've always sort of wondered, the festival of lights, what is, that's, it's the lighting we put in Brandon Park, correct? What is, explain to me how that money breaks down, is some of that cost of electrical? And then some of that is cost of supplies?
More so electrical and some supplies, you know, the, inevitably, each year, some of that gets vandalized. You're close to the...
And how much, so, so it's say, what, say, two-thousand dollars in additional electrical cost in Brandon Park and four-hundred dollars in additional supplies? I'm just trying to figure out.
That would be, that would be a fair breakdown, yeah.
Okay, got it. Another question, the other park material, what is that material, the seventeen-thousand dollars?
Seed, you have to get special playground mulch, you can't just use any particular mulch, which is very pricey.
So it's, so we're putting that mulch in every year to the tune of seventeen-thousand bucks?
Yeah, well, we're putting it in every year, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does it be handy to spend some of that on trees? I think that's everything, Bonnie.
Mrs. Katz?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Bowman Field electric bill, is part of, are the cutters playing, paying for part of this? Or is this, where's this bill coming from? It's a line where it says Bowman Field electric bills.
Seven-five-zero-seven-three.
It's the common, but...
Cutters do pay their fair share for the months that they operate, and we do bill out based upon rate charges and time used for the high schools and those others that use the facility.
But aren't they, others that rent the field, isn't that, some of that rental, it goes towards the electric, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's an offset here somewhere?
There's an offset to that, yes.
Okay, okay, the other thing that I'm questioning, Tommy, is, you know, go back to Memorial Park Playground. The, the, the green on that playground is really disintegrating, it's really been bad for years and years. And it's one of the few where it is handicap accessible. And you cannot put mulch there where it's handicap accessible because of, with that playground. What I don't see here is anything that's going to be toward anything of reconstructing because that's going to be a huge, huge expense eventually to, to replace. And it really is looking bad, and I think at times, looking at that, I think it's also, it's a safety hazard in some places. And I think it would behoove us to eventually get something in your budget to try and replace that. I don't know what the cost of that is, I know it was quite expensive a couple of years ago, and the cost has probably gone up excessively at this point. And so I would event, I would really like to see that incorporated into your budget eventually here for that.
That would most likely have to come via some sort of grant. I've been told that the cost to replace that could be upwards of over a hundred thousand dollars, which is very, very pricey.
Okay, let me ask you this, okay, because I, what I'm being told is that if something's handicap accessible, that you can't have mulch there because it's dangerous? I don't know if this is truth or fiction here, okay? Do you have to have the green there or, you know, do you have to replace it with what's there? What would you call that, a pad of some sort?
It's, it's like a recycled rubber, yeah.
Now, does that have to be, you know, do you have to have that for the handicap?
Can you answer that, John?
Well, I think it was originally put in by an organization, together accessing parks, it was tapped. And so they did it for handicap accessibility, because there's wheelchair ramps. But you can put other mulch in that can be compacted and be wheelchair. I mean, it's something we could look into, I mean, you could reduce the amount of space to if we were, if it was, we had to rip the entire piece out. I think right now, it's patched, the top surface is really what's peeling off. And when that peeled off, it started to disintegrate the base. So I think when the Streets and Parks Department got... So I think when the Streets and Parks Department got the vendor in or that provides them, their recommendation was to remove it and replace it, which is expensive. So, I mean, I think it's something.
It's expensive to to replace, not replace it but to tear it up?
Yeah, remove the entire system and replace it.
So we're in between a rock and a hard place because this is really looking bad.
Right, and so I, and I, and we know it's in poor condition, but it's a large, as Tommy says, it's a large expense, more more than the maintenance budget can handle.
Something's gotta be done here eventually with it because it is starting to be a safety hazard.
Yep.
And I think we have to be very careful of that right now.
That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Smith.
Tom, the Brandon Park tennis court lighting, does that end with the Young Woods lighting? Is that under that that account?
I don't think so, no.
What accounts that under? The tennis courts for Brandon Park? And I'll explain to you why I'm asking that in a moment.
Wouldn't it be Brandon Park?
Well, while he's looking that up, let me explain to you why I'm asking this. We had a situation about a month, six weeks ago that was brought to the Public Works Committee by a resident, that the lights at the Brandon Park Tennis Court were on all night long, night after night after night. So we did a little bit of investigating and here we come to find that the electrical panel box, which has two hundred and forty volts in it, has a padlock on it. The padlock was never locked because the person that is using that to train people in tennis had the key to the lock, which was given to him by our former recreation director and he was told to make sure the lights were off at night. Well, you really don't give a key to someone that exposes that kind of dangerous high voltage. And what happened was many, many times the lock was never locked. Many, many times the lights were never turned off and they were on all night long. So the Public Works Committee, I believe it was at the last meeting and the one before, we asked that a timer with an electric eye be put on that. That box lock changed and no one that uses that tennis court will have a key to that and what they will be able to do is to turn it on and the photocell, if it's night, will allow the timer to come on and after a certain amount of time, the lights will go off. We estimated the cost of that to be under a hundred dollars and we've asked that that be done for two reasons. Number one, because of safety. If someone would have gotten in there standing on wet grass, they'd been electrocuted and we would have had the liability because we did not lock the panel box. And number two, we're gonna save on the electric bill. And I guess these were good questions that were asked and I noticed on these electric bills, you know, some of them look kind of high. Is that due to a rate increase or is it due to negligence on the part of the lights being left on for many, many, many hours? And I think that as we go forward next year, based on the fact of what we found at the Brandon Park Tennis Court, I think we should look into these things next year to find out how these lights are being used, if they're being turned off at night or left on all night long.
There has been a rate increase and the lock has been changed, so there's no more public access to that.
To that facility, but what I'm saying is we go forward, we wanna look at these other places to see how the lights are utilized, when they're turned on, when they're turned off, who has access to turn them on and turn them off so that we can abate that rate increase by making certain that the lights aren't on and they shouldn't be on. And I think that's one of the things we should be looking at next year, to try to control those costs because we know what happened out there at Brandon Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for fifteen and sixteen? Seeing none, we can move on to seventeen and eighteen? And we'll do these one page at a time since they're two full pages.
Streets Department and Traffic Control salaries, Personnel Services salaries, seven hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. Overtime, forty thousand. FICA, sixty-three thousand eight hundred. Life insurance, four thousand three fifty. Workers' comp, thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Pensions, two hundred sixty-five thousand nine fifty. Health insurance, three hundred ninety-six thousand. Total, one million six hundred one thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. Purchase of services, water and sewer, one thousand four hundred. Light and power, sixteen thousand. Street lighting, sixty-two thousand. Heat, ten thousand. Beltway lighting, six thousand three hundred. Trash removal, thirty-eight thousand. Contract services, nineteen thousand. Recycle program, twelve thousand.
Questions on this page? Mr. Smith?
Tom, the Beltway lighting, we pay for that. Who maintains those lights? Do we do or does Pendy?
We maintain some. We we, the non-interstate sections of Beltway, they'll, they share the cost, but we'll maintain some of that lighting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mealy?
Oh, sorry, just a quick question about trash removal, Tom. Seems like in twenty, you just remind myself here, we had budgeted fifty-five thousand in twenty fifteen and spent it, but then we budgeted it down to thirty thousand in twenty sixteen, spent slightly more than that. I'm just wondering what, why the fluctuation in cost?
I can't speak to twenty fifteen. Twenty sixteen, thirty thousand and thirty-eight thousand proposed. That covers the.
Oh, excuse me. I'm seeing we spent thirty thousand in twenty fifteen, but we had a budgeted fifty-five thousand, sorry. I'm just trying to figure out and then.
In in twenty fifteen, there was an expected cost with sweeper dumps. We were able to find a more cost effective solution for that and I believe that that's been carrying through here in sixteen and projected for seventeen.
But we are projecting an eight thousand dollar, well, we we saw, we we spent five thousand seven hundred more than we expected to last year and now it's going up again. I'm just wondering why why the increase is then over the thirty thousand now?
That I can't, I I don't recall how the the two thousand sixteen budget number was established. We can take a look at that and come back on Wednesday or Thursday with with an answer for that.
Okay, sure. That's fine. I mean, I just know, I, well, we have our trash collection contract for next year already here and it's what, thirteen thousand? So clearly we're dealing with sweeper dump costs and various and sundry other things. I'm not quite sure what all plays into that line.
There, there may have been more items taken to the transfer station, which is outside of our trash removal contract, which I think, which is on this upcoming agenda, awarding the bid for that.
Right.
So whatever the transfer station fees were, that could be another cost. I I just have to look at the account to find out what additional things were outside of our our normal trash bid removal were there.
Got it. But I guess, I guess perhaps the greater question is, it's not as though our trash costs are gonna jump by another eight thousand bucks next year then too. It's just kind of a random, some years we have to throw away more stuff than others, sort of, more hope, well, get back to me.
I'll let you know.
Thanks.
I know when we looked at the at the pricing before and the public works when that came, there were a couple of years that we only had one bid and we tried to get other bidders and we couldn't get them. I haven't seen the proposal that's coming up that we're gonna be looking at, I I think, next week, as to whether there was more than one bidder, but I know in the past they've been kind of locked and I know that they've asked for other bids and they didn't get any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silla, page eighteen?
Streets Department continues supplies materials, gas and oil, fifty thousand. Protective clothing, five thousand four hundred. Supplies and materials, fifteen thousand. Storm sewer materials, seven thousand one hundred. Traffic paint, sixteen thousand. Traffic controls, fourteen thousand. Hand tools, three hundred. Vehicle repairs, six thousand five hundred. Traffic signal repairs, eight thousand. Other equipment repairs, eight hundred. Facility maintenance, thirty thousand. Bowman Field maintenance, fifteen thousand. Repairs to radio, seven thousand five hundred. Street resurfacing, one hundred thousand. Brick street resurfacing, forty thousand. County liquid fuel street resurfacing, twenty-three thousand five forty-three. Equipment, thirty thousand. Total expense, two million one hundred thirty-five thousand three hundred ten.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Smith?
I would have to go back and look, but I thought under brick street resurfacing, we were putting fifty thousand in a year.
I can, I can respond to that. Two or three years ago, the administration's proposed budget reduced that to forty thousand along with a quite a number of other small reductions as a means to save some money. And while we've talked about returning that to fifty thousand, that has not happened. I think it's now the third year.
But you'll notice we've had a hundred thousand. I know it's not ideal, but we're stuck, we've restored some funding for street paving from the general fund, so.
And we're also adding a hundred thousand dollars out of the city budget for the full hundred thousand for street paving? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
And I'll note, just because I did the math earlier, I think this is right, Mr. Pavlov might be able to help me know for sure that the hundred thousand dollars here, two hundred ninety-seven thousand from Liquid Fuels, a hundred and five thousand from Act thirteen, three hundred and eighty-five thousand from CDBG, is that correct?
That's with the.
With the cur grants, forty thousand dollars in bricks and twenty-three thousand dollars in county liquid fuels that if I did my very quick math correctly, amounts to about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars being spent this year for streets in one way or another, which is a healthy number, given that we've in the past tried to hit at least seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which of course the streets need many more dollars, so a pretty healthy number, given that we've reintroduced for the first, well, for the first couple of years now, money back into the general funds and and so I for one am happy to see that number reintroduced and wanted to throw that out there, given Mr. Smith's comments.
We, we budgeted forty thousand for bricks, but we spent eighty.
It was two years.
Oh, it was two years.
Yeah, we didn't spend the previous years.
Oh, we didn't spend until twenty sixteen.
Fifty project.
Right, yep.
And then the other forty years we just spent next. That's on the.
Yeah, okay. Forgot that, yeah.
Other comments for this page? Hearing none, then we can move on. Page nineteen, flood control. Mr. Silla?
Flood control. Personnel Services salary, ninety-two thousand nine twenty-three. Overtime, eight thousand. FICA, seventy-seven hundred. Life insurance, five hundred. Workers' comp, five thousand two fifty. Pensions, twenty-nine thousand five fifty. Health insurance, forty-nine thousand for a total of one hundred ninety-two thousand nine twenty-three. Purchase of services, water and sewer, one hundred twenty-five. Light and power, forty-one thousand. Heat, seventeen thousand. Supplies materials, gas and oil, five thousand nine hundred. Protective clothing, six hundred. Flood control materials, twenty thousand. Departmental equipment, seven thousand. Vehicle repairs, three thousand. Other equipment repairs, eleven thousand. And flood levy certification, fifty thousand. Total expense, three hundred forty-eight thousand five forty-eight.
Questions for this page? Seeing none, I believe that you're off the hot seat, Mr. Silla. Congratulations.
Thanks.
For now, rest your legs and your back and we were ahead, but now we're behind. So we can move along to Liquid Fuels Fund on page forty-one.
Okay.
Oh, that's that's gonna be your, and then we're so mean to you.
I'll see if I can cover this.
All right.
Page forty-one.
I was gonna make Mr. Grado do this, but go ahead. We haven't seen him tonight.
Projected revenues, Liquid Fuel State, eight hundred eighty-one thousand six seventy, interest five hundred. Surplus, eighty thousand for a total of nine hundred sixty-two thousand one seventy. Salt and cinders, sixty-one thousand. Street materials, eighty thousand. Street resurfaced, excuse me, two hundred ninety-seven thousand six seventy. Beltway light maintenance, one thousand. Storm sewers and drains, twenty thousand. Equipment purchases, one hundred thirty thousand. Hand tools, one thousand five hundred. Light, power, street, two hundred seventy-five thousand. Traffic light and power, twenty-one thousand. Repairs to vehicles, seventy-five thousand. Total projected expenditures, nine sixty-two one seventy.
Questions?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, not related to economics here, but over the last year or so here, I'm taking occasion to sort of side Tommy on occasion with a few visits to certain sites and such. And I mentioned once before, earlier in the year, that he's got a good fabricating team down here that have fabricated a device that allows us to do some paving in much quicker time than we had done in the previous years, cutting down manpower, cutting down the expense involved and cutting down, I would assume, on the use of some of the paving material itself because it's so accurately used. So just a good time for me to thank Tommy for that kind of effort and also show the citizens that he's in a position that has been saving us some money over the last year. That in itself is an advantage for us as we sit here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out for us all. All right, no other questions, then we can move on to Capital Projects. And let's see if we can keep Mr. Nichols up here for a while again.
Okay.
All right, we're on page thirty-seven.
The twenty seventeen Capital Projects budget, projected revenues are on thirty-seven and the expenditures are on thirty-eight. So starting with projected revenues, transfer from debt service, as you know, the debt obligation of two and a half million dollars, we're proposing a million dollars be allocated again for projects that may happen in twenty seventeen. That being the levy and the other one is the potential of City Hall project. Then under Department of Conservation, natural resources, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's being proposed as funding coming from DCNR, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for Brandon Park and ninety thousand dollars for Ways Garden. Transfer from General Fund, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's for the Park Avenue Rockby, a million five hundred thousand dollars for Bowman Field. That's, the grant actually is a million two hundred fifty thousand dollars, but some ancillary projects that were done for match purposes, we're showing a million and a half dollars. Private, twenty-five thousand dollars again for the Park Avenue Study, that's coming from Susquehanna Health and the Pathways to Health Project, Phase Three, we're allocating fifty thousand dollars from County Act thirteen funds for that as well as a TAP grant, one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred forty. So total projected revenue is four million sixty-four thousand four hundred forty. Go on, okay, on the projected expenditures, the next page, and we're showing the Rockby Project for Bowman Field of a million and a half dollars. Fifty thousand dollars for the Park Avenue Planning Study, again, twenty-five thousand dollars from Susquehanna Health and twenty-five thousand dollars from the city. I'm showing the other twenty-five thousand dollars in the RVT budget, as I mentioned earlier. City Hall Fire Headquarters improvements, again, a possible City Hall project, some other improvements for five hundred thousand dollars. Brandon Park. Brandon Park, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and Ways Garden, ninety thousand dollars, again, the proposed DCNR grant. Levy improvements, five hundred thousand dollars. We're just showing that as what was set forth in the recent debt, or the obligation. Again, that's, you know, in the hands of the Water Authority and the city in terms of what, how we proceed with that. Levy recertification process and the Pathway to Health Project, Phase Three, one million-one-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars, for a total of four million-sixty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Okay, questions on capital budget? Ms. Meeley?
Mr. Nichols, can you go back over with me the redevelopment and capital assistance program funding? Where it's one-point-two-five coming in redevelopment and capital assistance funding, but we're counting it as one-point-five. Why?
There's, it's not only Rockby, but there's been other improvements. There's gonna be another seat project that we're looking to do, and we're trying to work through the Visitors Bureau and the crosscutters have indicated they're gonna allocate money for that project. And so, it probably won't come to a million-and-a-half dollars, it's really a million-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but we're showing potential projects of a million-and-a-half dollars over the next twelve months.
Got it. It won't all be redevelopment and capital assistance.
It will not be all redevelopment and capital assistance. That came in at one million-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, so we are, I mean, if you wanna be technically correct, we probably should make it a million-two-fifty and maybe other projects totaling two-fifty.
This budget was put together.
Before we received the grant.
Yeah. So, that's why it's showing at one-and-a-half, that's what we're looking for, but we just think that.
Update it maybe by Thursday. You could have recommendations on the amendments we could put through to reflect changes since the proposal was put out.
And then just a follow-up question. We're showing, and I know this is just the Capital Projects Budget, but still, in the 2016 actual estimated investment in Bowman Field is one-point-five million? Did we spend one-point-five million on Bowman last year, this year?
If you look at the actual project, the project itself, the construction project, I think, was a million-one, and then the previous project that we did was a couple hundred thousand dollars. Again, we were trying, just to show on paper, that if the Rockby Grant was a million-and-a-half dollars, we're matching that one-for-one with a million-and-a-half dollars in projects that have been completed to date. So, if you add in the AE costs, engineering costs, and everything we've done, we've probably spent a million-and-a-half over the last couple of years.
But not in 2016?
Not all in 2016, no.
Okay. I've just, the members of council, yeah, the members of council that I spoke to, none of us could recall authorizing one-point-five million dollars of spending in 2016.
No, no.
So, okay, all right, so that is sort of Bowman Field prior years might be the way to describe.
I mean, we can, if you want, I was just trying to show that we're matching the potential million-and-a-half from Rockby.
And I understand that as a matching effort, but just from my understanding, this can be referenced as prior year spending by the City of Williamsport on Bowman Field. Is all of that city dollars or some of that?
Because if you remember, we tore out the bleachers, we made that paved area, and we did some other things. And so, if you look at all the AE costs and other costs, roof painting, yeah, that's right, painting the roof, and all that's gonna go towards matching the Rockby. But, I mean, we only have to show a million-two-fifty now because of the.
Got it.
Whether we need to demonstrate all of that in the 2016 slash 17 capital budget, I guess, for clarity's sake, kind of separate the demonstrated match for the state Rockby purposes from our budgeting document.
Yeah, that's somewhat my concern.
We can do that.
Because Mar, because Maroney's gonna get a hold of this in the Sun Gazette and tell people exactly how much.
No, we can change that to 2016 and prior year's investments. So, again, it's just record, just for the record, we wanted in there to show how we're matching the Rockby.
One other question, the Visitors Bureau, in terms of projected revenue, they, we had, my understanding was that, yes, they had committed to fifty thousand dollars last year. I see that we didn't receive that payment and we have not budgeted it for this year.
No, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years is what they committed to.
Okay, my recollection was fifty. Is that, then, in here somewhere?
I'm not sure, we put it in debt service or where?
Debt service.
Okay, so that's under the debt service line.
What you'll be giving to in a second.
So, yeah, okay, so we're, what was the fifty thousand, then, that we didn't receive last year, or was that just misplaced and we moved it to debt service?
The fifty from, that changed again to the twenty-five thousand dollars a year for ten years. Originally, it was just fifty thousand dollars, but they committed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over ten years, so that was changed.
Yeah, got it. Okay, so just, that was just a change in the documentation. Good. Yeah, that's, I think that's everything I have.
Okay, anything else on the capital budget? Mr. Smith.
Bill, you have next year, five-hundred thousand dollars in levy improvements. Did we carry over any escrow dollars from the last couple of years we put into that?
No, no, I don't know.
If there are additional funds, no, we were putting the numbers aside from general fund year to year, and we had to.
We may have budgeted fifty thousand or something like that, but then that was not expended, it dropped to the fund balance. The only true capital dollars we allocated was, you know, through the borrowing, and we're showing that here, whether it's utilized or not, that's up to council and the mayor.
I think I remember that the year before, we started spending the money and then we needed to spend the money.
For something else?
No, 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 on the levy study.
So, that was put into that?
I believe so.
Okay, because we're gonna need all the money that we can find.
Right, but we didn't ask.
And that may, that may change in the future, you know? We don't know what we're gonna have coming in from other sources.
Right.
We're working on that, trying to build a regionalization of that, which is going to help us down the road to capitalize on dollars that may be there because we are working with other areas. So, that's an unknown at this point, but that certainly is gonna be a help.
But you're right, we did set money aside in one budget year in anticipation of the study. I think that helped us in those first couple of years of actually having to pay the, what now has totaled a lot more than we ever anticipated.
We have almost a million dollars in that study.
Yeah.
At this point in time, over the last three-and-a-half years, it's almost a million dollars of locals, our money.
True.
Yeah, thank you.
Then we can move on to Act thirteen.
As you can see, under Act thirteen, we're only, and this is just a guesstimate, from, you know, how it's been decreasing and considering activity, we're only budgeting three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for 2017, and utilizing those dollars for street resurfacing in the amount of a hundred-five thousand dollars, debt service of two-hundred-thousand dollars, and graphists run flood mitigation for forty-five thousand dollars, for a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Questions? Hearing none, we can move along to Debt Service Fund.
Debt Service Fund, which is on the previous page. Again, we're showing the proceeds from issuing of the borrowing. Again, it's just revenues that are there. If we wanna utilize them for the City Hall Project and the levy improvements, there's a transfer to the General Fund for debt service, six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Transfer from other funds, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred from Liquid Fuels, and transfer from Act thirteen, fund a hundred thousand dollars, for a total of one-million-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. And approximately that amount, then, is being expended, a million dollars for transfer to Capital Projects. Bond issuance cost of twelve thousand dollars, that's some legal costs related to a line of credit. Payment of long-term debt, four-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred. Payment of short-term debt, six-seventy-six-thousand-five-hundred. Interest expense, long-term, three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Interest expense, short-term, a thousand dollars. Payment of the long-term debt, that shows on our balance sheet and while the interest expects, does not, but we do show that in our debt service budget.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Meeley?
So, just for the sake of clarity, our current debt service annually is eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars approximately.
I refer to Joe. Now, there's other costs in there from our line of credit, you know, the current, the recent debt obligation.
The amount of money we're paying to have borrowed money in some description or another, whether it's the one-point-five, whether it's the two-and-a-half million dollar line of credit, whether it's the one-point-five million in short-term borrowing we do every year, generally speaking, we are paying about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
I think that the numbers you wanna look at are the long-term debt. The short-term debt will be paid off in 2017, that'll be the final payment, the seventy-six five-hundred plus the thousand in interest.
Okay.
So, you'll, I think the two numbers you wanna look at are the four-twenty-three-five and the three-forty-six-eight-hundred.
Okay, so that's seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand, something like that, is what we're looking at, that we're.
Annually going forward.
Right.
For our long-term debt.
Okay. I think personally, that's a high enough mortgage for my two space.
Agreed.
Okay.
One, another question, just to help me remember the various movements of funding. The, from Act thirteen, it was two-hundred thousand dollars for debt service, only a hundred thousand shows on this page. Where does the other hundred thousand go?
That other hundred thousand goes towards the debt service related to Streetscape, I think, is how we handle that. It's the.
In RVTs.
Yeah, it's the part that was, if you recall, there was.
The public service building improvements.
Okay.
So, it's shown in RVT's budget?
Yes.
In, I forget which of the budgets, but under Bureau of Transportation?
Utility fund, yes.
Okay. Is there any way that we can, just because I probably ask that same exact question every year, split up the Act thirteen, transfer out to show one going to the general, to the debt service budget and one going to the Bureau of Transit Debt Service Budget?
With the right vote, you can do whatever you want.
Okay. But there's no accounting, but there's no accounting reason to not do that?
No, that's fine. That wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, that'll just, because I, it seems to me that I ask that same question because, while I forget. Okay, any other comments on debt service? Then moving on to City Hall Operating.
City Hall Operating Fund on page forty. Rental income as budget in the various city departments is proposed at three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars. Rental income from other than city departments and City Hall, twenty-one hundred dollars for a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Project expenditure salaries, twenty-six-seven-seven-fifty-two. The related benefit costs are listed there. Supplies and materials are thirteen thousand. Telephones for the building are forty-four thousand. Water and sewer, twenty-six hundred. Heat, twenty-four thousand. Electricity, thirty-five thousand. Repairs of the equipment, five thousand. Maintenance, thirty thousand. Contracted services, forty-five thousand. Contingency of thirty-five thousand, five-ninety-three. Five thousand furniture and carpet and machinery and equipment, forty-one thousand, and some of that is to supplement the IT budget, or a big chunk of it.
Comments or questions on operating, City Hall Operating Budget? Ms. Nelia?
Bill, on contracted, contracted services from forty thousand to down to five thousand, what's going on there?
I'm not.
It's an increase to forty-five thousand.
Joe, what's that?
You mean from forty to forty-five?
From forty to forty-five.
Went from forty to forty-five thousand.
Yeah. I just wonder what happened here.
It's curious, we know, we have hurdle here nearly every single day.
Part of that contract is the oversight of this building, which was handled through your contract employee.
Right, part of, and that will continue, we charged off twenty-five percent of John Mark's salary to City Hall because he's responsible for the City Hall, so that, that's charged off to the various departments, represents, like I said, twenty-five percent.
And you saw on the salary detail, the rate decreased there, so that would be reflective of some of the decrease showing.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Meeley?
The decrease in health insurance from last year to this year.
Parent-child plan to a single one.
Okay, got it. And the difference between the balance of revenue and expenditures?
You'll see that prior year, we're in a little bit, in 2016, we anticipate our revenue to be higher than our expenditures.
About six thousand, so we just.
This pretty much washes it out.
Wash, yeah.
Unappropriate surplus from 2016 to balance the 2017 budget.
Okay.
Similar to how we would show with the general fund, we're just not showing that comparative equity sheet for each of the.
So, instead of transferring it somewhere or letting it fall to the bottom line, we're just shifting it to the following year?
Yeah, we're keeping those funds there and using those to supplement some additional funds.
Got it.
Other questions?
We charge off various departments by square footage, and, you know, again, if expenses come in higher than expected, then we have the shortfall, then we make it up the next year by charging more in rent to the various departments. So, it's just, we try to wash it out every other year, you know, depending on what happens.
Okay, but so is this, I've never noticed this before, that the revenue and expenditure line item does not line up, but this is standard practice and I just haven't picked up on it before?
Right.
Won't catch up after a couple of years, so.
Yeah, every other year, we try to, I mean, yeah, we're always trying to catch up the following year, so to speak.
All right, hearing no further questions, then we move on to the Unemployment Compensation Fund. Budget?
Yeah, the Unemployment Fund, which John can't use, even though he wanted to try to use it, but anyway, transfer ten thousand dollars in the General Fund, five thousand in Utility Fund for a total of fifteen thousand. Unemployment claims paid, fifteen thousand dollars. Again, these are just placeholder numbers, may not use them, hopefully.
Okay, questions? Hearing none. Pool repair capital fund.
This is something I think was requested by City Council, and on page forty-four, you can see that we're showing the donations, as you know, that have been made by community donors. The budget for revenues was twenty-five thousand dollars in 2016, nothing being proposed in 2017. The same thing from anonymous donor with fifty thousand dollars, and the balance left from the showers estate of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars that was released from the foundation for a total of a hundred and thousand nine hundred and fourteen, and we're now budgeting that as a revenue, a hundred thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. That is available for memorial pool capital repairs. We have not allocated any of those dollars. That's something that the new Recreation Director and the Rec Commission, the mayor need to decide. We do have an issue with the leak, which needs to be addressed, and I'm sure we'll be accessing those funds with approval if necessary from City Council, but other than that, you know, the mayor and Rec Department need to decide how to utilize those funds or just keep them in place for another year.
Last year, when we established, when council asked to establish this fund, the idea was to take the community donors and the showers estate, create a fund, and then allow it to grow by additional set-asides on a yearly basis until we had a large capital expense. There's no additions planned under the administration's proposal for 2017, right?
No.
And so, that's something that we might wanna consider. Mr. Silla, I don't know if you would be the best person to ask on this. What, if, for example, we needed to replace the liner for that pool, what would that cost? And that wasn't replaced as part of the million dollars we council approved for reinvesting?
Correct, that was not replaced.
Not replaced. What did the liner for that pool cost?
Hundred and thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
There is no liner.
Yeah, there's no liner.
Okay, so.
We took it out, but there is, it's a concrete pool, it does need work, and each year, when we drain the pool, they'll have to redo the construction joints, a lot of the tile work would have. the tile work would have to be-
So, that's regular maintenance, not a capital investment?
And that's not a major capital, that is regular.
What if the pool, the pumps went bad completely?
I mean, that's a replacement.
And what would the replacement cost for the pumps?
Probably talking about sixty-five hundred dollars, I guess, for a pump. I mean, the, the leak that, I mean, if you recall, when we did the, the pool assessment, they were talking about replacing the entire pool with a five million dollar project.
Sure.
We've spent a million dollars on the pool and it's-
It doesn't go, a million doesn't go as far as it used to, didn't it?
Right, but we are still, I mean, some of the old stainless steel gutters still leaking, we've identified some of that, and we have to address that, you know, in the spring, so, that could be it, you know?
As Mr. Smith suggested earlier about setting aside some capital expenses, I'm glad that we did that. What I would hope that we would do is a, a regular thing, and honestly, I would hope we would create some additional capital funds for other purposes, is to set aside, maybe just a token amount, a couple thousand dollars on an annual basis, so that when the money is needed, on big chunks of money, we have it available and aren't adding to the debt services, Ms. Mealy suggested. And so, that's maybe something we can set aside, a little bit of money to help this grow. Maybe we draw immediately upon it through a transfer over the course of the 2017, once we have what those figures are, but then set aside a little bit more next year, and set aside a little bit more next year, because in five more years, something else will break, or in three more years, something else will break, and we'll have that money there. And if we can get in the habit of doing that for Memorial Pool, then maybe we can get it in the habit of doing it for park equipment, so that when the rubber mats underlying, whatever we do in Memorial Park go bad, which we know that they'll do in some amount of time, we'll have the money to replace that. And then, when we have a fire truck go bad, or a levy that needs to be repaired, or a City Hall roof that needs to be replaced, we've done it with good fiscal planning, something that people didn't do for us, but maybe we can do for the next generation who'll be paying taxes in a few years themselves, so. Ms. Mealy?
Um, just one quick question, and I don't know the answer to it, but is there anyplace else that that money should be showing up in our budget, like as a reserved line or anything like that, or that should just stay right there in the, okay, excellent, great.
Any other questions on the pool repair capital fund? Mrs. Katz?
I under the misconception that the anonymous donor, how much was, how much was the donation? I thought it was a hundred thousand.
It was, part of it was set aside here for future maintenance, and then the other half of it was set aside towards the renovation that just occurred, two years, well, the renovation that occurred over the last two years.
So, so, because I've asked this question before, so some of the money has been used already, so you're saying that fifty thousand has been used already for the renovation?
We've used the fifty thousand in the renovation project, and we've set aside fifty for cap, for maintenance or capital repairs going forward. That was, yeah, that was at his request to split it fifty-fifty.
That's, okay, I didn't, okay, that's right, okay.
His or her?
I was gonna say, he's a little less anonymous now.
Any other on this? Hearing none, I believe that brings us to the end of what we're scheduled to review tonight, unless I'm mistaken. No one says I am. So, the next item on the agenda then is announcements. We're going to have a, hopefully, brief executive session following this meeting for two purposes, one is negotiation and the other is personnel. Other announcements include that Wednesday, December seventh, at seven, we'll get to do this all over again for the second part of our work sessions reviewing the budget. Then, on Thursday, December eighth, at seven-thirty, we'll go back to our normal time for the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting, where we have not only the budget in first reading, but other agenda items. And that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Any further comments or questions from anyone? Mr. Grimes?
Just to go back in relation to the 2017 proposed budget, I didn't really get the number on it. Page four, income estimates for 2016. There is one of the estimates that'll likely have to be updated with the business, mercantile and business privilege prior, line four, one, zero, eight, four, two. That one's hard to budget for as well, because there's a lot of back and forth, a lot of legal questions, a lot of documents that have to be requested working with CPAs, but we do expect at least another sixty or seventy thousand dollars to come in by the end of this year.
Sixty to seventy, seven?
At least, yes.
Okay, so-
It's hard to get an exact number on it, but it should be here by the end of the year.
So, if we put, if we made amendments to reflect both here and in the bottom line, and then that affects, because it's in the bottom line for 2016, 2017, of a conservative number of, say, sixty, then that might affect our various calculations in terms of both the bottom line, especially the bottom line for the upcoming 2017 budget. Thank you for that information, and I assume you've passed that along to Mr. Pavlock?
Yep, and we can talk exactly how that needs to be accounted and reflected.
And in fact, I think he's mentioned that that could be a possibility to me, so he's probably thought about how to account for it.
What we're talking about.
The mercantile business prior.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments this evening? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, there was a FOP meeting this evening, and fifteen minutes ago, I was contacted that the police union has agreed to the tentative contract, which is great news, so the administration will bring this before City Council very, very shortly.
Okay, we'll probably anticipate that on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Brings us to the end of the meeting, kind of a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, executive session to start immediately, and I ask, I ask that Mr.-